All right, well, good evening. Welcome to the Temecula City Council meeting. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we have an invocation this evening with Chaplain Buck Longmore, retired firefighter. Evening. And then if Mr. Schwenk, if you would lead us in the flag salute.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, City Council members. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for today. Lord, we ask that you would give the City Council members wisdom and discernment in these proceedings tonight. Lord, we pray that your will will be done in and through these decisions, and that it would edify the citizens of this city and bring glory to you. Lord, we thank you for working in and through the firefighters and first responders during the Fairview Fire, and for protecting life and property of the many people affected in this terrible event. Lord, we continue to lift up those families that were affected by this fire, and pray for your mercy and grace to abound to them all. We also thank you for your... We also ask that you would continue to guide, lead, and protect the many men and women who are serving, not only in the city, but in this nation. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and do the roll call, please.
Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
Here.
And Councilmember Stewart is absent.
All right. So we're going to start with presentations. We have a lot of folks in the room that we'd like to recognize this evening, but I'm going to take things a little bit out of sequence here. First, I'd like to start with the proclamation for Manufacturing Month. And so I wanted to recognize National Manufacturing Month. And we have two folks here from the Southwest California Manufacturing Council. Good evening. I'm going to go ahead and read this. We'll bring the certificates down, and then I'd invite you to say a few words, if you wouldn't mind. So, "Whereas the City Council, the City of Temecula recognizes Southwest California Manufacturing Council and Temecula Valley Unified School District for their efforts in providing a forum for collaboration and best practices between local manufacturing community. And whereas the manufacturing industry is a critical component to Temecula's economic growth, currently, a total of 150 manufacturing companies reside in Temecula and employ over 72... Is that 7200? 72,000? There's an extra zero. All right. But the comma's in the right place, so 7200 people. And whereas California accounts for more manufacturing output and jobs than any other state in the nation, with manufacturing output at 14.5% and job output at 11%, in 2020, manufacturers helped drive California's economy by exporting over $133 billion in manufactured goods. And in addition, there were an average of 1.2 million manufacturing employees earning up to $112,000 annually. There are currently 683,599 manufacturing businesses in the United States, with over 35,000 of these located in California alone. In 2020, the manufacturing sector contributed $2.27 trillion US dollars to the GDP of the United States, with added value output increasing from $2.714 trillion in the fourth quarter, at an all-time high in the third quarter and fourth quarter of $2.77 trillion. For every dollar spent in manufacturing, there's a total economic impact of $2.86 to the overall US economy. And for every one worker in manufacturing, five workers are added in the overall US economy, including direct and indirect impacts. Taken alone, manufacturing in the United States would be the eighth-largest economy in the world, with $2.27 trillion in added value for manufacturing in 2019. Only seven other nations, including the US, would rank higher in terms of their gross domestic output. I therefore, Mayor Matt Ron, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 to be National Manufacturing Month." So, thank you all for joining us this evening, and tell us a little bit about yourselves.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us. My name's Patrick McCoy. I am with Paulson Manufacturing. I represent the SCMC, Southwest California Manufacturing Council, here in Temecula. Not to get too much on my soapbox, but Paulson Manufacturing is celebrating 75 years in Temecula this year, and that is all American-made.[336.53][336.53](Applause). When we talk about American-made, and we talk about made in America, everything we do is 100% US-made, down to the rivets, the washers, the raw materials. Everything we do is made right here in our factory. We export to about 80 different countries, right here in Temecula. So that's a big thing to be proud of. But I speak for the whole group where, like you said, you know, a big force multiplier that we have is for every one manufacturing job, five jobs are created down the supply chain. And I speak for everyone here, is that we are a big advocate of that. We are here to create local, great, high-paying jobs here in the Temecula Valley for our kids who are graduating the high schools and ready to enter that workforce, where we are here ready to supply them with those good, high-paying jobs. I couldn't do this without my co-chair, Juan Carlos with Optiform, so I'm sure you could say just a little bit more about that.
Thank you very much, Patrick. Thank you for having us. This proclamation's a big deal for us. We are... We don't take this lightly. So I'd like to introduce two of our interns who've, Patrick alluded to, or one joy that we have is the pipeline that we've created with the local school districts, and hoping that we can bring more and more of our young people into the fold. And this, I know that it's a big part of our city, that it's important for us to try to hold on to as many of our young people, keep them into the city, and try to give them as many high-skilled, high-wage-type opportunities that we can. So that's one of our missions, and we have two examples of interns that... Oh, three, of course, yeah. Please, so I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves quickly, if that's okay, and ask if you could just simply say where you were, what you... With which company you participated with, and one thing that you learned this summer? Start with it.
Hello. My name is Eric Andrew Gaiagos. I'm a senior now at Temecula Valley High School, and over summer, I worked with Optiforms with Juan. And over summer, I really learned a lot about like the entire process of making, like something, like manufacturing something. I only knew about like the finished product, but working with Optiforms really allowed me to see the bigger picture and like all the fine details that goes into everything, and like how that process really like kickstarts all of like production for just everything.
I'm Michael Hill. I was a student at TV. I graduated now. I'm at MSJC, and I worked at Optiforms as well. I worked in the machine shop, and later into quality control. And both were very... They showed me a lot, and I think one of the major parts that stood out to me was what the work environment was like. And that's something that school doesn't show, and I thought that was a great thing, and very valuable to me as a student and graduating, and soon to be joining the workforce.
Great, thanks.
Hi, I'm Ava Lea. I am a senior at Temecula Valley High School, and I actually worked at Abbott, who's not here, but I'm here. So kind of what I learned, I learned how to really work with a team. I actually knew nothing about manufacturing before this internship, and I was able to learn so much, and I loved the team so much while I was there.[551.89][551.89](Laughter).[553.89][553.89](Applause).
That's pretty much all we got. I just want to thank the City of Temecula for your ongoing support, the Temecula Chamber. You know, it's a really collaboration between industry, education, and the city, and we thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Thank you.[570.75][570.75](Applause). Congratulations. Thanks for being a part of our... (Inaudible). Thank you.[575.75][575.75](Applause). And with that, I just want to recognize Jenny Hutter with the school district. She is an integral part of this program. I know Jenny is here, as well as the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce CEO and President, Brooke Nun. I know Brooke is here, there. They are an integral part of the Manufacturing Council as well. And to really sum up the... The Manufacturing Month, we have a three-minute video that our manufacturers are not only job producers in the city, but they're also bringing, carrying on the tradition and exposing our local youth to jobs that are available here in town. So Jonathan and Chris, if you want to roll the video.
The American manufacturing industry is celebrated nationally on the first Friday in October and throughout the entire month. During this annual occasion, we'd like to highlight two of Temecula's finest, and take a look at how they are working to promote manufacturing to local students.
Paulson Manufacturing has just celebrated their 75th year. We make tactical products, industrial, fire, medical.
I got started interning here at Paulson Manufacturing through my school. We have a CTE program that focused on engineering and design. They gave me the opportunity to interview for the position here. Here at Paulson, what I've mostly been focusing on is assembly, especially in our tactical department. We assemble the face shields and riot shields for like police officers and, you know, military.
We have 200 employees, and we are growing. So joining the Southwest California Manufacturing Council and partnering with the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce and with the Unified School District made a tremendous amount of sense. Infusing that younger generation into our workforce gives us new energy and growth.
Paulson really started out as just a cereal box toy. You would send in those box tops and 25 cents just to get those, you know, space goggles as they market them. I think it's really neat how like it's just all been here in Temecula, where I've grown up, all these years, all started here, done here, and I really appreciate you guys having me here, and I've really, you know, enjoyed my time.
Optiforms is an electroforming company, also an aerospace company, defense company, medical company. We build parts for those industries. We have been in business for almost 40 years. We currently have about 70 employees.
I was very hands-on in creating parts and manufacturing, which is very cool, working the machines, understanding how they work. This internship has helped me a lot in guiding my decisions in my future.
I was able to get this internship through our CTE engineering and design program. I've been able to gain a lot of experience about the manufacturing side of products. At Optiforms, I started off in quality control. After a month, I switched to the machine shop. With both of those, I gained a lot of experience about Optiforms as a whole, and what it really takes to be in manufacturing.
What we've been working on has been my favorite, working on the slip mirrors, the ones used that the optomologist with the... That scan your retina. I think that's really interesting, because you see that everywhere.
I think it's really cool that this company is involved in making reflectors that are components in big things that we know about, like the 9/11 tribute or the Eiffel Tower, that illuminate these great buildings, based off of a small company here in Temecula that we can be a part of.
We do need to get kids excited about more than just Manufacturing Month, but manufacturing in general, all year long, to better the future of Temecula and other growing cities.
Temecula embraces 150 manufacturers, over 7,000 jobs, and 4.5 million square feet of manufacturing space. Join us as we showcase the potential of modern manufacturing and fostering interest in manufacturing careers.[827.26][827.26](Applause).
Well, thank you again for coming out. Remarkable companies, great local jobs, great careers locally, and certainly an important part of our economy. So thank you all for the work you do. All right, so moving on, we have a presentation by the Temecula Valley Women's Club this evening as well. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Purdy, and I'm the president of the Temecula Valley Women's Club. And with me tonight are some of our members. I'd like our members to please stand.[871.43][871.43](Applause). The Temecula Valley Women's Club is a nonprofit. We currently have 80 members, and we have been giving back. Our club has been giving back to the community for 42 years. When we celebrated our 40th anniversary, Councilmember Mary Ann Edwards came and spoke to our group, and she said to us, "The Temecula Valley Women's Club is Temecula's best-kept secret." So we are here tonight to try to raise awareness of who we are and how much we give back to the community. We have a video to show you today that was created by one of our members, Patty Castillo, and in the video, she highlights many of the things that we have done in the past for the community and in the present. This is just a small sample of what we do every day. At the end of the video, we highlight our biggest fundraiser of the year, which is our annual holiday home tour. This is our 36th annual this year. The home tour tickets are available now, and this is the way that we fund all of the scholarships that we are able to give to our local students, and also help with other community projects. So please, buy a ticket to our home tour, come and help support the Temecula Valley Women's Club. Tickets this year are only $35. They're available through all of our members, on our website, tvwc.com, and through local businesses. And our Temecula Valley infamous soups will be available this year at our home tour again. So please, come enjoy the homes, come enjoy the tour, and meet the Temecula Valley Women's Club ladies who do so much for the community. So I'd like you now to see our video. Thank you very much. Any questions? I did leave brochures for anyone who wants them.
I know it sells out really fast. I mean, it's Mary Ann, I'm up here. Hi![1237.23][1237.23](Laughter). I know the ticket sales go quickly, so...
Yes, yes. So get your tickets now?
Yes.
Right. Thank you all so much for the work you do in the community. It's amazing work, and just blessed to have you here.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.[1256.42][1256.42](Applause). All right. Next, you've probably noticed all of our first responders and other folks, and a couple of cowboys even, in the room here tonight. The reason we have all these folks here tonight is to thank them for the work that they've done during the Fairview Fire. So started on September 5th, the Fairview Fire remained active for 30 days, and a lot of our first responders and volunteers worked tirelessly to protect families, individuals, and even our animals in Temecula and the surrounding areas that were affected. We are asking a lot of those folks to come here tonight to be recognized for the hard work and service they provided to our community, their contribution of time, their talent, the materials to support those affected by the Fairview Fire, and just their kind and generous hearts in our community. During that time of emergency, residents of Temecula and community partners came together to support one another. Many contributed professionally to the response, but also personally donating supplies, working in shelters, providing safe havens to impacted families and their animals. City of Temecula is very proud to recognize all of the selfless work that our firefighters, public safety personnel, staff, our sheriff's department, volunteers, and others that manage the emergency together with one heart and one mind. It's with great pleasure and gratitude that we'd like to present certificates of recognition and a thank you to all of the folks who dedicated this time. So first, I want to start by thanking all the first responders who battled on the front lines, and even those who worked behind the scenes to ensure smooth operations and continuity of service. The city would like to give our sincerest appreciation again for all the work you do, and even risking your own lives and health to keep others safe from harm. And so let's start, and I'd ask for representatives of the organizations to come down if they're here. First, with Riverside County Sheriff's Department, Captain Zach Hall, and others with the Sheriff's Department. And I think our lieutenant... Yes, there you are. Thank you.[1385.63][1385.63](Applause). Chief Crater with Cal Fire and Temecula Fire Department.[1396.83][1396.83](Applause). And Myrietta's Fire Department, Fire Chief Malloy.[1408.58][1408.58](Applause). And Pachanga Fire Department, Chief Keeling and Chief Belts.[1420.51][1420.51](Applause). All right. And I'm going to go on and thank some other folks here that did some remarkable things. California Ranch Company, Bob Brown.[1442.13][1442.13](Applause). Come on down.[1444.13][1444.13](Applause). The CRC sheltered and supported the evacuation of 826 animals, horses, donkeys, llamas, cattle, chickens, sheep, goats, peacocks, dogs, cats, rabbits, and birds.[1457.11][1457.11](Applause). Quick funny story. My wife and I were at the CRC delivering some supplies during the incident, and Bob let us know that there's some coffee inside, and my wife started making a beeline toward the restroom, and he told her, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, hang on, don't go in there. There's 25 cats in the women's restroom."[1475.33][1475.33](Laughter). And about half a dozen rabbits. And then he asked her, he said, "Do you think the rabbits and the cats get along?" And her answer was, "I guess we'll find out."[1484.23][1484.23](Laughter). Galloway Downs, Ken Smith, Tina Smith, Chris Bullard, Katie Robinson, Chloe Smith, Ashlyn Dorsey, Edwin Perez, Guillermo Carrillo, and Jose Campos.[1498.01][1498.01](Applause). Galloway Downs sheltered and supported evacuation of 100 animals, 50 horses, 50 pigs, sheep, goats, et cetera. Remarkable, you know, volunteers there as well. Green Acres Ranch, Roy and Catherine Rich and Margaret. The Ranch and Green Acres folks sheltered and supported evacuation of 25 horses. Let Them Be Little Feline Rescue, Diana Serrano.[1526.33][1526.33](Applause). They issued food and supplies for displaced pets.[1532.11][1532.11](Applause). Wine Country Hay in Ranch, Virginia McClintock. Not sure if she's here this evening, but Wine Country Hay Ranch sheltered and supported the evacuation of 55 horses. Home Depot Temecula, are you guys here tonight? All right, come on down.[1551.13][1551.13](Applause). Home Depot in Temecula worked with, actually, me personally. We went down there during the evacuation to try and get some PPE, some water, some supplies. And then what was, at one point, a major fire incident turned into a major rain incident all at the same time. And so we took all the rain ponchos, all the eye protection, everything we can get our hands on. And then, I will say, surprised the heck out of me, because we were there, ready to purchase all these items, and Home Depot donated them all. So thank you for that.[1586.97][1586.97](Applause). The American Red Cross. American Red Cross volunteers, come on down. You staffed and managed a shelter at Ronald Reagan Sports Park, and your team coordinated feeding and donated food and supplies for the shelter. Remarkable work there, folks. All right. And the Department of Public Social Services. We have Chief Ferris, Monica Bravo, Georgina Hernandez, Lisa Rash, and Diana Serrano. DPSS managed shelter in the gymnasium at Temecula Valley High School, kept everybody warm, safe, and taken very well care of. Our Temecula Citizen Corps, TCC, and CERT team, Captain Matt Hayes and Michael Alford. All the TCC members, if you wouldn't mind coming down and joining us here as well. TCC, you were...[1656.41][1656.41](Applause). You were all extremely instrumental in establishing shelters, starting with the pickup and delivery of city shelter trailer and unloading building and dormitory. They were on hand again to assist in the demobilization and cleanup of the shelter, reloading city shelter trailer and movement of equipment storage for the purpose of restoring CRC and preparing it back again for community use. All right. Other City of Temecula departments, I wanted to recognize Community Services Department, and in particular Gwen Wilcox and TCSD staff, if you wouldn't mind coming down as well.[1694.47][1694.47](Applause). You all did an amazing job, staffed the shelter at the Community Recreation Center, and many of the staffers, you all stepped up to cover round-the-clock shifts on very short notice. Dedicated group there. Emergency Operations Manager, Michael Alford. Michael is the city's first Emergency Operations Manager, and we're proud to recognize him. Yes, come on down, sir.[1724.23][1724.23](Applause). He's a remarkable leader in emergency management, displayed effective emergency response, efficient communications, executed the plans that were put in place, and helped ensure the well-being of all of those that were affected by the fire. And then Facilities Division of Public Works Department. We have John Macy and others. The facilities team was critical in getting the newly purchased shelter floor padded for the gym, padding for the gym moved, unrolled, rolling cart built, and laid out to protect the floor and provide a cleaner environment for all of our shelter residents in incredibly, incredibly swift amount of time. And then individual staff, I wanted to also recognize Mr. Cardenas. Jamie, you opened up your property as a safe haven to approximately 20 horses, 25 goats, five burrows, and about 50 or so chickens.[1783.47][1783.47](Applause). Tanis, I think you're... I saw you here earlier. You sheltered five horses in the Los Ranchitos community as well. Tanis, thank you for that.[1795.23][1795.23](Applause). And then some other TCSD staff we wanted to recognize, Cassandra Ambriz, Millie Avila, Amarias Camarona, I'm going to butcher your names and I apologize, Andrea Castanada, Kennedy Cross, Melissa Davis, Azrael De La Rosa, Liza De La Rosa, Flor de Lima Tapia, Matt Dobbins, Kimberly Garcia, Alan Guzar, Helen Gutierrez, Cooper Holly, Mark Martinez, Yvette Martinez, Chanel Morales, Andrea Santoyo, Lauren Munzenmeyer, Elizabeth Ong, Amy Pierce, Tyreek Pareja, Christine Post or Kristen Post, Lauren Preble, Emilio Rea, Cecilia Solis, Kate Towne, Andrew Turner, Matt Turner, Elizabeth Waddleton, Jessica Walker, Gwen Wilcox, and Jame Wilcox. This is the team of folks, and I know there are so many others, hundreds of others, that participated in the Fairview Fire, keeping our community safe, but give them all a round of hands, remarkable response. Thank you all. All right. And I understand each of you have a couple minutes to speak if you, no, I'm kidding. Go sit down. Thank you all for coming out here tonight and giving us the opportunity to thank you for all the hard work. I'll say on a personal note, you know, one of the things that Cal Fire did that was pretty remarkable, we're in the process of building the West Coast Behavioral Health Center for firefighters here in California, just a couple of minutes north of Temecula. And Cal Fire, this area is surrounded by county open space, high-risk area, 30-foot wall of flames came down to greet that property. And the property is there to protect firefighters and help them deal with mental behavioral health treatment. And that property was incredibly well protected by Cal Fire in that process, not a single structure was lost there. And you guys did an amazing job. So thank you for that personally from me. All right. Mary Ann has a comment, please.
I do, just real quickly. I had the honor of going out to the base camp on 9/11. And not only were they coming in from their 12-hour shift to eat, get very little sleep, and go back out again, it was the most incredible place I've ever seen since I was on the Ronald Reagan aircraft carrier. It is run like a machine and to get things together that quickly and that well coordinated, I even saw fire trucks from Maryland, Colorado. So they came all the way across the country to help. And they took time out to do a celebration and memorial service for the people who lost their lives on 9/11, for their comrades in arms. And it was so moving to see those, what, 600, 700, Cal Fire plus all the other first responders there, sheriff's department was there, forestry service, you know, I could go on and on. But to see them all stand when the piper, the bagpipes came in and then Cal Fire's color guard came in and presented the colors. And then the sheriff's helicopter did a flyby and did a circle and went over and it was very emotional to think, here they are on the front lines of this fire, yet they take time out to honor and recognize those who lost their lives. So that just says, to me, that says everything about Cal Fire and what they stand for, saving people's homes, saving people's animals, saving people's lives, and honoring their comrades and brothers.
Thank you. All right, yes.
Just a quick thing, I just want to say, you know, thank you. I know they all left, but you know, we all expect sometimes the people, for the first responders, to come in and do their job. But what, what an amazing sight to see, the community come together and help each other out. And that was absolutely amazing and that's what our community is about. Our community is about when there are problems and there are issues, we drop everything and we go help each other. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who has done that, whether they checked on their neighbors and calling, whether they went to their homes, or whether they took in animal, excuse me, animals. What a blessing. So I just, what a great place to live because we do drop whatever we need to when our neighbors in trouble. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to Board and Commissioner reports. Kathy Seismore, tough act to follow, but what have you got for us this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Ron. I'm Kathy Seismore. I am the chairperson for the Community Services Commission. We are a commission of five. We have commissioners Ewan Hawkes, Chris Kristewski, Eric Levine, and our vice chair, Gary Adi. Our commission reviews and makes recommendations on topics related to the parks and rec element of the general plan. Our last meeting was last night here in Council Chambers, October the 10th, 2022. Next slide, please. And for our meeting, we approved our action minutes for our September 12th meeting. We also received a presentation from Matt Peters on the draft of the Quality of Life Master Plan. We were able to ask some questions, provided some feedback and some suggestions, and I believe you guys are going to be pretty happy when you, when you get your opportunity to see it. Our next meeting will be Monday, November the 14th, 2022, and next month you will be joined by Vice Chair Gary Adi.
Thank you so much. All right. Public Safety Report, Chief Crater.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and Temecula residents. I will make a few comments on what we seen just a little bit ago and the city taking the time to recognize all that went into the Fairview Incident and how an incident in Hemet can impact a region with evacuees of not only, you know, the human sorts but also animals and people are very attached to their animals and a lot of emotion goes into that. But just how the community came together, there wasn't panic. I think when we think about, you know, evacuating 22,000 people, that is a lot of folks over a large geographical area, the sheriff's department, CHP, even though people were evacuated, we're reassuring people they were protecting their property. And I think all the way down from the Incident Command Team, six, Cal Fire's Incident Command Team coming in there and bringing all the partners with them and communities together during the incident was, was quite amazing. Like I said previously, it's only the second time an Incident Command Team from Cal Fire has been deployed in Riverside County. So, and then to hear all the people involved with the city and the, and the big hearts and the organization that, that, that I work for, and I don't feel like a contractor here. I feel like someone that is loved as a fire chief and part of the team. So I think that is something that the city preaches and definitely, and they follow that, right? So amazing community, amazing people in our community and even in Riverside County, out in Glen Oaks and Awanga and all these areas that I serve, as well as Duluth and La Cresta, even the, the support was coming from those areas to help people that they didn't even know. So it's a true blessing and I thank you for honoring us tonight. I'll get into my report now. Temecula Fire Department, for September 2022, our firefighters ran 862 calls. Thirteen of those were fires and 100, or 622 were medical related and then 62 traffic collisions. We've been holding steady right at 870 to 900 calls a month for service and we're on pace to still be the second busiest city in the county for this year. And the county is on pace to run roughly 200,000 calls for service this year. So it has been busy and we continue to get busier as communities develop and people continue to move to Riverside County. Next slide, please. As far as plan reviews and just to show how the city is growing, plan reviews were 607, construction inspections, 270 annual inspections, which we're going to be on pace to finish ahead of schedule with our mandated inspections, which we did last month. And then people coming into City Hall to inquire about plan reviews, construction inspections, total 27. And then yearly totals are on the right-hand column as you can see. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Moving on to public comments, non-agendized items. Do we have any public comment this evening?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have, I believe we have 13 public comments on non-agendized items per our policy illustrated on the agenda. We will go ahead and take 30 minutes of public comments. And the first speaker is Mark from Marietta, to be followed by Slim Killens. Each speaker has three minutes.
Evening. First time. So I want to thank you for allowing me to come up here and spout. I'm here to talk to Mayor Matt as directly as I can and somewhat critically. It's come to our attention, based on the meeting two weeks ago, that you're on record in quoting to Pastor Tim that you would have voted yes and standed alongside Jessica in her vote for yes for the pro-life proclamation. It seems as though you didn't do that, which tells me, and speaking for Tim because he's been public about it, that you're not a man of your word because you said that you would vote yes. In the public comment portion, Brian Nash came up and spoke. And in today's parlance, he chose to use a pronoun to address Jessica. And that pronoun was "that," as in, we have to deal with that. In my view, he was bullying her and demeaning her on city business. And she's not only a council person, but she's a wife and a mother, a Christian sister, and she continues to serve after she's a veteran and she continues to serve this city. And what was your response? Nothing. You sat there and you gave agency to Nash as he bullied her and demeaned her and used that term against her. So it appears to me that by giving agency to him doing that, you give agency to everybody to do that, to use their pronoun of their choice to address anybody in this chamber. You probably don't agree with that, but you did give that agency. As far as I'm concerned, you've been outed as a liar in public, you're an inferior mayor, and you're an inadequate man because you should have stood up for her. You should have shut it down and told people you will address people in here as ma'am, sir, mister, whatever. At this point, I can address you folks as dummies, morons, maybe even retard because that's what you gave the agency to. God bless you.
The next speaker is Slim Killens, to be followed by Dan Collins. Slim? And then Dan Collins.
As a believer in God and a Christian, I faithfully adhere to the words of 1 Timothy Chapter 2, and I quote, "I urge that in treaties and prayers and petitions and thanksgiving be made on behalf of all men for kings and all who are in authority." That's you guys. "So that we may lead a tranquil and quiet life in all godliness and dignity. This is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior who desires all men to be saved and come to the knowledge of the truth." Close quote. It is for this reason I pray for you and the leaders of this great nation, yes, even Governor Gavin Newsom, who recently signed into law several bills, including Assembly Bill 1666, advocating and protecting unborn, protecting abortion sanctuaries for out-of-state women at taxpayers' expense to have their babies murdered by abortion practitioners, rather than supporting a basic life-affirming resolution or even proclamation which represents many of pro-life constituents, your constituents of Temecula. Planned Parenthood and abortion advocates that support the lawful and willful murder of unborn child in the womb are also culpable. Our hope is that Temecula City Council members not be as culpable as their fellow comrades and do what is good and right. That is why I wrote this poem for you. Unborn babies' lives matter too. We love you, council members, but we love the unborn child in the womb too. The law says they aren't real, so it's okay to kill. Why are so many Christians silent on this issue when everybody knows an unborn child is more than fetal tissue? Back in the day, they said that about slavery. You say it was wrong then and sang freedom songs, but now look at you, you're doing the same thing too. When will you, my brothers and sisters, stop defending this malicious lie? Why do millions of black, white, and brown babies have to die? They're human too. Don't you hear those babies cry? Shouldn't they at least deserve a chance at life? Aren't you ashamed of playing this deadly game, killing innocent babies for personal gain? Now is the time. Stop abortion sanctuaries and set these babies free. Sadly, you don't realize your own hypocrisy. By killing over 60 million babies, over 60 million babies, over 60 million babies because the United States Supreme Court decision Roe v. Wade in 1973, you're not only killing yourself, but you're also killing me. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dan Collins, to be followed by Steven Gerard Sidlarsky.
Thank you. I wanted to speak two weeks ago. I didn't get the opportunity. I wasn't here early enough. I'm going to speak for the silent majority. It sounded like 84% of those emailed were against pro-life. And I'm going to say, I believe they're very mistaken. There's a lot of silent ones of us out here who are afraid to speak up, but I'm going to speak up today. So I thank you for allowing me to speak. Let me be clear, I am a Temecula resident with five registered voters in my family and believe me, we vote. Two weeks ago, I witnessed one of the most egregious displays of humanity. I witnessed a city councilman call out a church he probably knows nothing about. Excuse me, lost my place. These are good people who care about their community. Zack Shrank, for someone who claimed they had two weeks to prepare their speech, I found it unfortunate. I also find it unfortunate that a portion of the city council missed an opportunity to stand with all women, all women, by including pro-life women, to offer an alternative to women who feel they don't have a choice other than an abortion. You had the perfect opportunity and a way to deliver information that may give women options to choose life. These women deserve that. They deserve a choice to choose life by standing up for those women who give all women the power to make better choices. Abortion should not be celebrated. I saw celebrations back here and signs, I skipped my abortion to come here. We should celebrate life and the joy it brings. Two weeks ago, I saw sad group of women who never will know the love of a child. By putting their, this resolution in motion, I would employ, empower all women at the same time, protecting the unborn with options for life. Women are pressured all the time to have abortions. Imagine the empowerment you would have given them by putting in place a foundation to help them in their struggle to choose life. No one ever talks about the aftermath of having an abortion. No one ever talks about the aftermath of having an abortion or the long-lasting agony of a woman who has to go through that in their entire life, having had an abortion. Many women who go through this procedure will have deep regret for the rest of their lives. For some, it will destroy their life. Many may end up on drugs. Many may have mental issues and unfortunately for some, commit suicide.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Steven Gerard, to be followed by Payam Dineshwar.
Beloved Temecula mayor, city council members, and citizens, I love all of you. Jesus loves all of you. I am Lay Brother Steven Gerard. I've actually been monitoring your city a little bit because I consider myself one of the top five personhood pro-life speakers in the United States of America. Mayor, you'll be delighted to know I'm also manufacturing-type semiconductor technology. Years ago, after I got out of the United States Navy, you'll be happy to know that I have an honorable discharge, enlisted and officer, and I'm a Mustang gunner in the United States Navy. I've given all of you a Bible bookmark. It's going to have a lot of my information on it. Citizens, I didn't make enough for you, but give me time. You have also been given a flyer. And beloved mayor, I hope you'll take a solid look at the flyer because we all deserve second chances. On the back of the flyer is a lot of my research. All over the United States of America, I travel to delve into pro-life, the diplomacy of life. And I've just given you the Personhood Sanctuary Language. Enjoy reading it and soak it up. You get a second chance. I hope you'll vote in the Personhood Resolution by Christmas. What a wonderful timeframe to vote it in. On the back of the laminated language that all of you get, city council members, take a look at the Lorraine Morning Journal of my hometown of Lorraine, Ohio, because that language has the actual Personhood words that can go in all eighteen thousand cities of the United States of America. There are essentially two types of cities in the United States of America because I've done my research and my zoning. You all are a general city. Can everybody say that with me? A general city. However, I understood why the vote went the way it went. I understand all of these things. You've got to move in the new direction of becoming a charter city. Everybody, say the word, charter city. By becoming a charter city, you can actually put the Personhood language in your city charter where you yourselves can shine forth that loving light of life and peace and personhood. Okay. For those of you who would like, I'd like to give some special thanks to Larry at Birth Choice. He's already spoken with me. Thomas at Forty Days for Life. Finally, how many citizens here would like Temecula to move in the direction of a charter city and become a pro-life personhood city? Please raise your hands. God bless you all. Jesus loves you. Enjoy everything I've given you. And I hope you'll put me on the agenda in the future. Don't throw my attendance away. Thank you. God bless you all.
The next speaker is Payam Dineshwar, to be followed by Kara Brand.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, city council staff, and everyone else for your time. I want to talk about four topics today, if possible. There was major representations on the 9/27/22 meeting, which is very important to address for future decisions. You know, Temecula is ranked the nineteenth safest city in 2019 and Marietta the third in 2022. Many view Temecula as moderate-leaning right, Marietta as conservative. However, on 9/27, about ninety percent of the attending audience were very liberal. Those watching from home could hear them very clearly. Sport analogy is the way team had majority of the fans in the home team stadium. They did not represent Temecula as, as many were from LA and San Diego County or other blue cities. Also, it was noted that among hundred twenty emails sent, well, those emails could be anywhere from Earth. Eighty percent were pro-choice, twenty percent were pro-life. Those emails do not represent Temecula as a whole either and should not play any significant role in previous, current, or future major decisions. Yet, when Zach Schrank was heavily criticizing Jessica Alexander for her great ideas, he got a huge approval cheer from the audience. And he pointed it out to the crowd and said, "Even the majority agree too." That's a misrepresentation of Temecula. Given anyone in the U.S. could be in this audience, since we have an open border. And, you know, he used that to establish his liberal opinions in those five minutes, which had major impacts. Typical establishment political politician move. I do not want mayor or city council member that deceives the public using misrepresentations. I do think there is a solution for this. And, well, I guess it's pretty much going to be those who try the hardest, if it's going to be like this. You know, I call for two hundred to three hundred most dedicated conservative, America First, ultra-MAGA First Republicans to go to the blue leaning, blue cities, email them or go in person and be loud and polite like they were on 9/27. I also want to thank Mayor Ron and Jessica Alexander for everything that they have done. They are populist nationalists, which means that they connect with the people and they want what's best for their city, state, and country. And I will make the rest of the points later. Thank you for your time and attention. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kara Brand, to be followed by Allison Aranda.
Evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Karen Brand. I'm a wife and a mom of three girls. I'm nervous to speak. And I'm also nervous for the culture that my kids are going to grow up in. Last week, I was shopping at Stater Brothers and I heard an argument break out on the aisle next to me. A woman was yelling, "You do not talk to her that way. It's abusive." And in her aim was a man shopping with his mother. He responded in equal decibel, "Mind your own business." And it escalated to where they were both screaming profanities at each other. I covered my four-year-old's ears as he said, "Leave me the f alone." And the lady who believed herself to have some moral high ground on him yelled, "No, you're an a-hole." A few weeks before that happened, I was here at the city council meeting, watching common decency fall apart here as well. One side frequently interrupted, "Shut up." And the other side ignorantly screamed contraception as public comment took place. I listened to one of you get bullied because she asked her own church family simply to come pray, not give public comment, not email, just pray. You don't have to be a Christian to be pro-life. Councilmember Zach, I find it concerning that you believe you have to be religious to argue against poisoning and mutilating innocent human lives. Do you believe the majority of your constituents have no conscience anymore? Unfortunately, that could eventually be the case. A numb conscience will be our culture's demise. As long as people of influence continue to say objective stances are only from zealous extremists, chaos will keep building here. There will be more outrage from moral relativists who raise their voice and their expletives, basically spinning in circles like, "My truth is my truth." No, my truth is my truth. I'm speaking to some of you council members in saying this. The mythical endeavor of neutrality that you claim is no more morally superior than the devout atheist who follows the logical path of their belief system all the way to no lives matter. You are not neutral and you are not representing a community. You are fearfully representing statism, and that's a belief system too. I leave you with one question. Do you believe in absolute truth? It's hard to answer because if it's a no, then all of your arguments are self-refuting. But if the answer is yes, then you might have to face the music when you're wrong, like when you read an embryology textbook and realize factually, human life begins at conception. So I will be the zealous extremist here and say this. Regardless of what anyone says, it is always objectively wrong to directly and intentionally end the life of any innocent human being. If you can't stand on that in a society, then kiss your society goodbye.
The next speaker is Bob Quaid, to be followed by Bob Cal.
Good evening.
I'm, I'm sorry. So the next speaker was Bo- Bob Quaid?
I thought you said Allison Aranda.
No, go ahead, Allison.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Allison Aranda. I am a proud citizen of Temecula. I've lived here for nearly my entire life, with the exceptions of going to college and to law school. My father helped build our first sports park, and I graduated from TVHS just a few years after it opened. My husband and I are raising our four amazing kids in this beautiful valley. We are active members in our church. We support local charities and we love a great block party with our neighbors. But there's a more important reason why I'm here tonight. It's mid-October. An election night is in a blink of an eye away. There are candidates to be chosen, measures to consider, as some of you up for reelection all know too well. One specific proposition, Prop 1, is particularly troublesome. And that is why I'm here tonight, to seek your resolve in this regard. Proposition 1 would amend our state constitution to declare, "The state shall not deny or interfere with an individual's reproductive freedom in their most intimate decisions." Some might say that this proposition is only about abortion. But is it? Currently in California, women and minor girls have a legal right to obtain an abortion through all nine months of pregnancy, right now, before the proposition even passes. Medi-Cal and private insurers are required to cover abortions on demand through all nine months of pregnancy, before this proposition even passes. Prop 1 would not change anything about the current abortion practices in California. So what's the big deal? Why is it necessary? Well, Proposition 1 does not just guarantee the already protected right to abortion and contraception. It protects an individual's reproductive freedom in their most intimate decisions. So what does this mean? This expansive language creates a constitutional right to obtain children by purchasing eggs, sperm, surrogacy services without interference from state regulation. An underage girl would have the constitutional right to be a surrogate or sell her eggs without parental involvement. Any of your children could do this and you would not be any the wiser if this proposition passes. Minors would also have an absolute right to sex-change drugs and surgery without parental consent. Laws against incest, polygamy, sex between adults and minors would unlikely be able to even stand against this new broad constitutional right to reproductive freedom if this proposition passes. Proposition 1 goes much further than putting a right to abortion in the Constitution. Its language is broad enough to establish previously unthinkable acts, unthinkable acts, as constitutional rights in the state of California and in the city of Temecula. Is this what we as parents in the community of Temecula want? Is this what we as citizens want? Is this what you as councilwomen and men who have children and grandchildren want for future generations? These are not the values that the city of Temecula was founded upon, nor what its citizens currently support.
Sorry, your time's up.
I propose that the city of Temecula adopt a resolution that declares its opposition to Proposition 1. Thank you.
So now it's Bob Quaid and then Bob Cal.
Evening. Yes, thank you. Honorable mayor and members of the council, make no mistake. The last council meeting made it clear that we are in another civil war. This war is not unlike the one fought one hundred fifty-seven years ago that cost the lives of six hundred thousand soldiers to end the right to own a slave, a right where one man could legally own another man as a slave and even murder that slave under the right circumstances, no questions asked. The war we fight today is about a woman's legal right to an abortion on demand, a right for a woman to murder her unborn child, no questions asked. Both rights are evil and should have no part in a civilized society. But today's civil war is not being fought with guns. It's being fought through the courts, through legislation, and in the hearts of the American people, which also makes it a spiritual war, a war of good versus evil, right versus wrong, and the creator God versus the destroyer Satan. At the last council meeting, you all had the opportunity to show which side of the battle you stood. Councilmembers Schrank and Stewart stood in favor of abortion rights, while Alexander, Ron, and Edwards opposed. It is clear that two of you are unaware of or chose, choose to ignore God's command, "You shall not murder." I would like to thank Mayor Ron, who pointed out in the last meeting that the LA Times lied about the intent of Councilmember Alexander's proposed sanctuary city for the unborn resolution, claiming it was about banning abortion in the city, which was not only ill-informed, but it deceived many who were, who were present in opposition, including some council members, and even caused the state attorney general, who threatened legal action if an abortion ban was passed by the city. Like many, I thought the resolution would simply provide an opportunity for the city to commit more of its abundant resources to women who needed help in carrying their child to term or keep, to keep them or put them up for adoption. Further misinformation was laid when it was reported that over eighty percent of the emails received, or about a hundred, opposed this resolution while ignoring the three hundred residents who signed a petition and the other hundred of us that stood out on City Hall praying, all in favor. If my old-school math serves me, that's eighty percent in favor and twenty percent opposed, not the other way around. The Bible calls the devil the father of lies. So let us do our best to speak the truth and call out deception when we see it, as Mayor Ron did. Lastly, this November, the people of California will vote on Proposition 1 that will enshrine, in those exact words, "Enshrine the fundamental right to an abortion in the California Constitution." One definition of enshrine is to make something sacred, raising it to religious value. This proposition would make abortion rights equivalent to a state religion imposed against the religious moral values of the people. It's, I pray that this proposition passes. It's evil and it cannot be voted into law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, for our thirty minutes, Bob Cal is the last speaker.
Evening.
Hi there. I also want to bring up Proposition 1, which actually hasn't made much news at all. I didn't even know much about it until last two weeks ago. One of the things that it is is a constitutional amendment to the California Constitution, allowing abortion up to the ninth or the, or up until birth. You don't see these kind of laws in most of the world, really, except maybe North Korea, China, places that don't revere life at all. So we don't want to be like that. We want to be good people and considered good people. So on just a secular note, it's, it's not right to do this Proposition 1. So please vote no on that. I had a chance to, another subject, I had a chance to talk to the Temecula Gunfighters Group on Saturday. One, one man came up to me. He was part of the Gunfighters Group. He said that the regulations that the city has put upon them has not allowed them to do their usual yearly gunfighter thing, you know, where they, they shoot blanks at each other and stuff like that. I don't know if they shoot each other, but anyway, do their thing, which I've seen for, since nineteen eighty-eight. So it's part of history. It's part of Temecula. We should be revering our, looking at our past history to know who we, what we, where we came from and, and what we're doing. So please, I ask you to look into the situation so that we can have those Temecula gunfighters out there at Fourth of July and other events. And nobody complained on the Fourth of July about this, I understand. So I hope that this is brought up to, to adjust the regulations so that the gunfighters don't have to put their arms in a wrangling situation. have to put their arms in a wrangling situation, is the wording of the law, where they wrangle them away from the gunfighters and put them in a depository or an armory or something like that. They should be able to carry their weapons down to the gunfighter place where they're going to shoot, have the shootout, maybe at the bank, and do their thing. I appreciate you all, and thank you. Bye.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes 30 minutes of public comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, city council reports. Do we have anything this evening? No, from Marian? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, first off, before you guys leave, I just want to say thank you, because I didn't even know you guys were coming out here.
That's your back.
I just want to say thank you for everybody who was here last week supporting the life of our neighbors, our children. So thank you for that, because I wasn't expecting this. But I do want to say, before you guys leave, please get out and vote. November 8th is the day. A lot of people will have a tendency to kind of wait till the last minute, so I want to encourage all of Temecula, get out and vote. The ballots are already out, and don't wait till the last minute, so you can get out there and do paper ballot, which is always the best way. But this is our city, this is our country, and this is our right to vote. So I just want to encourage each and every one of you, each and every person that's online today, to do your duty and get out there and do your right. Thank you.
Zach?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple slides. So we opened up, finally, we opened up the Santa Catueta's Interconnect Trail a couple weeks ago. It was a wonderful day, a long road to get to where we were, a long trail to get to where we were. This is an interconnect project that connects about five miles of trail on the northeastern portion of the city, and it connects underneath Inez, underneath Jefferson, underneath Interstate 15, and connects to the Diaz Road Trail. This is a huge deal. This is something that really adds a lot of value to our community, and we had a great showing out there on that Saturday morning, and we've spent some time on it and see that it's quite busy. I'd like to thank staff for managing the project, and Nino and Matt, they did a great job getting this over the finish line, so I really appreciate that. I would encourage everyone to get out on the trail. It was a fun day, yeah. We do actually have a nice little video that staff put together, so if we could show that. A little bit. Yeah, so this closes a huge gap in this segment. You used to have to essentially cross over the freeway on Winchester, and it's really difficult. This opens up a much larger portion of the city to people of all abilities, to kids and families, and it's really exciting, so. And then to kick it off, we're hosting a farmer's market ride, so if anyone's interested, here's the map. Bike Temecula Valley is hosting this, along with Bianca and Company and Temecula Bike Train. We're going to lead a guided trip down to the farmer's market. We can come down, get some breakfast, get some veggies, and then head back home. So if you're, you know, anywhere in that northern part of the city, in the harvest area, we're going to start out at Joseph Road, and it'll be guided both ways, so look forward to seeing the community out there.
And it's all downhill, right?
It's downhill both ways.
Thank you. I'll be there.
All right, thank you. All right, I just have one quick slide, if you would. So we are doing another Coffee with the Mayor this Saturday, October 15th, 8:00 to 9:30 at Buzz Coffee on Temecula Parkway. If you haven't been there, it's a great new coffee shop in town that has a huge following all of a sudden, so excited that they're hosting our event there and hopefully look forward to seeing you all there. All right. Now moving on to the consent calendar, we have several items for approval this evening. First, wave reading of standard ordinances resolutions. Number two, approve Action Minutes, September 27, 2022. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve City Treasurer's Report as of June 30, 2022. Number four, authorize purchase of lighting equipment for sports field lighting LED conversion project. Number six, appropriate funding and award construction contract to All-American Asphalt for the pavement rehabilitation program citywide. Inez Road, Solana Way, Nicholas Road, Winchester Road Project, PW 21-10. And finally, number seven, approve grant of easement on portion of assessors, parcel number 921-300-006, Michael Mike Nigard Community Park to Southern California Edison for EV charging station project, PW 21-09.
Move approval.
Second. Motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Councilmember Alexander? Okay. I?
All right. Okay, so that passes 4 to 0, and we're going to go ahead and recess the meeting to the Temecula Community Services District Meeting. Mr. Schwenk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call to unite's Temecula Community Services District Meeting to order. In absence of President James Stewart, I'll be presiding over the meeting this evening. Madam City Clerk, please note that we are all still here with Stewart's absence. Are there any public comments for non-agenda items?
There are none.
Okay, thanks. We'll go and dispense with the reading of that and move on to our consent calendar. We have one item this evening. Item number eight is approve Action Minutes of September 27, 2022. Entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let us vote. And that passes 4 to 0. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our Director of Community Services report, Director Russo, anything this evening?
Yes, indeed, just one item, if we can bring up the slide. There we go. So many of you may have noticed, over at Ronald Reagan Sports Park, we had an area of the parking lot taped off for quite a while. We were renovating and installing a new concession stand and bathroom. You wouldn't think bathrooms could be that exciting, but it's very exciting to get a new facility over there. So exciting that we're going to be having a ribbon cutting. If you'd like to join us on Thursday, October 13th, at 3:30 p.m., we will have a ribbon cutting for the new concession and restrooms at Ronald Reagan. We'll have some snacks, and as I understand it, a ceremonial first flush.
Oh, I also think we should cut toilet paper, not a ribbon.
Right.
All right, well, we can do that.
I will pass that along.
Fun.
All right. Free plungers for the first 50 people, I hear.
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Director Russo. General Manors report, anything this evening?
Just shout out to President Stewart, wish him well and speedy recovery.
Yeah, here, here. We're here for you, Stu. All right, Board of Directors reports, anything? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, Tuesday, October 25th. We are adjourned.
All right, and then I'm going to call to order the Temecula Public Financing Authority. Please note, we're all still here with Mr. Stewart absent. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
All right. Moving on, we have one item on the consent calendar, and that is to approve Action Minutes of September 27, 2022.
Move approval.
Second. Please cast your votes. And that passes 4 to 0. Do we have an executive director report this evening?
Nothing tonight.
Anything from our Board of Directors?
Nothing.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn that meeting and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. And remarkably, we don't have a whole lot on the agenda, except items for future city council agendas. Do we have any that folks would like to see? Yes, go ahead.
All right. On behalf of the over 320 residents who have signed a pro-life petition this month, I would like to have the council vote to create a resolution to oppose Prop 1. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. And that's for future council agenda. Can we ask an item for the city attorney here real quick? Because the timing on that, I guess, is a little problematic, right?
Correct. I've consulted on these issues with the city attorney, and I've been advised that this item will be up for consideration after December 27 of this year, under our agenda setting procedures and rules. Yes. Okay. It was a timing issue, so it wouldn't come forward until the...
The city council agenda placement policy has a, I don't know, I'll call it a cooling-off period. So Councilmember Alexander brought forward an item on the subject of abortion. It was not desired at that time to put... But isn't Proposition 1 related to abortion? But both items have, are on the topic of abortion, correct? We're going to need, I think we're going to need a legal opinion on that before we can weigh in on it. I think before the next council meeting, we can certainly consult the city attorney.
It is also important to note, from a timing perspective, even if the city attorney opined that this did not fall within the three-month same-topic issue, that this would be placed on the agenda on October 25th, and any consideration of the proposition position would take effect, would be discussed at the November 15th meeting, which is after the election. Okay. So a proposition would no longer exist for a position to be taking, for the council to be taking a position on?
I guess what you're asking is, can the city council take a legislative position on legislation that's already been approved by the voters or the governor?
Or rejected.
Or rejected.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what that accomplishes if the voters approved a piece of legislation or the governor signed a piece of legislation to ask...
That's really good. No, the reason why, the reason why I'm saying that is because this is also, as far as a city item, I'm bringing it up. So 80%, if we look at it, 80% of the individuals here in California show that late-term abortion is not something they want, and the fact is, is...
No, I'm not debating the stats. I'm talking about the agenda placement process, and I think the way the policy is written, Randy's right, there isn't enough council meetings before the election to take a position as a body on Proposition 1 before the November 8 election.
Proposition 1 will no longer be a viable piece of legislation to take a support or oppose position on, as it will have been voted upon at that time.
So can we ever legally reverse something? Yes, we can. Well, I'm not saying the voters. What was that?
No, I'm sorry, we don't have the conversation with the community.
Personal vote. I'm just asking, I would like to be able to have the conversation with attorneys about what's to come, because if 80% of our people, hold on, if 80% of our people oppose this, there's a problem that not enough information is getting out to the public either. Not enough people, we don't have all the representation going out there to vote. Go ahead.
And I know a lot of this, we're talking about very technical things, and then it pivots into very substantive issues that people are passionate about. And right now, what I want to focus on are those very technical issues. I know there was a robust debate at a recent meeting concerning the substance. A decision was made to not take further action at this time, and because of that decision, there's now this three months. There's a more nuanced question about, okay, can a related item be brought and so forth? I'll say two points. One that I answered before, I think the analysis we've done is that, under these circumstances, the three-month limit would apply. So that just means in December, it could be revisited, this topic. There's a separate issue that the city clerk, city manager, and you were touching on about already passed or rejected ballot measures and things of that sort. The research we've done thus far, historically, the city has not taken positions after the decision is made by the voters, right, on laws that have been approved or rejected. And that's where we are at this point. But again, these are all things that could be revisited at a broader level later, once they're put on the agenda.
Well, then, that's what I'm trying to do, because the word, I think you said it was "historically." That doesn't mean it can never happen.
Of course not. But we're just trying to provide the context we have so far.
Exactly. Absolutely. So how can we do this? Do we need to have a discussion at another time, this week? Or are we just not going to have the discussion at all, because I think there's further details that we can pivot in and look at? This is not just about abortion. This goes way beyond that at this point in time. This is the lives of children as well. So it's not just abortion. This is proposition...
Right.
Beyond. Abortion is just a part of it. So it's not, just because abortion is a part of it, doesn't mean anything. It's a broader spectrum of what we have to look at.
Absolutely. And these nuances about the agenda setting procedure, I think we can all discuss more at the staff level.
That's what I want to know.
And provide clarification.
Okay, so can we do that at this point in time after? We'll set up a meeting to be able to do that, if we can, please.
Okay. Any other items? Not seeing any. Moving on, city managers report.
Nothing tonight.
And city attorney?
The city council met earlier tonight in closed session to discuss items described on the agenda. There is no reportable action.
All right. Well, with that, we're going to adjourn our meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting on October 25th. Thanks so much.